Good afternoon and welcome to the June 12th, 2014 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by the cadets from Girl Scout Troop 2851. The prayer will be led by Zoe Shepherd and the pledge will be led by Rachel Petrie. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right through and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Great job. Okay, this item is for... Okay, citizen comment. First court I have tonight is John Eric Johnson.
I had a feeling you just want to call me first. Mayor, City Manager, Counselor. My name is John Eric Johnson. I work for Longview Fire Department. This year, the Longview Professional Firefighter Association, Longview Fire Department, partnered once again with the Muscular Dystrophy Association. This marked the 60th anniversary of MDA and our goal for the fire department was to raise $60,000 for those 60 years, which was quite a large goal. For the past years, we've raised around 50, anywhere from $45,000 to $60,000. So, over the next three consecutive Fridays and one Saturday, the firefighters brave the elements out in the streets and help raise for this great cause. With the help of the citizens and the visitors of Longview, we much succeeded our goal. This year, we raised $73,444 to go to this great cause. Which is very... Thank you. This is an astronomical goal. This is one of the highest in the East Texas area. Obviously, the larger cities raise more money, but per capita, the city of Longview was one of the highest in the state of Texas. So, that was great accomplishment. We just want to take this opportunity personally to thank the citizens of Longview and the visitors of Longview because they are truly who made this possible. It was the hard work of the firefighters, but it was the citizens who made this amount of money this possible. So, we just wanted to thank you and this is... We're just truly blessed to be in a community that's so caring. And once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the county security board gives $50. Reason why they did that.
That's right, Colm. Would you be the first one to put the $50 in?
That's right.
I'm sure that's the reason why.
$50 bucks for the mayor.
Well, that was a big old boot. You could have put more than that.
You notice they always got the biggest foot in the fire department boot, right?
That's right.
Okay. All right. Wendy, I hope I pronounced this last name right. Wendy Zech, Zuch?
Zuich.
Zuich, okay.
Good evening.
Good.
My name is Wendy Zuich and I'm the Congregational Minister at Woodland Christian Church and I've come to support my brothers and sisters in Christ. I speak to Mayor Dean because he is the leader and the one who has spoken publicly, but I also realize that you speak for many and so do I. I speak for the straight allies whose voices are not being heard. When you say that you do not recognize that particular persuasion, it is heard as the LGBT folks are not even people. Then in the next breath, you say that you don't judge. It's easy to say you don't judge when in effect you don't recognize people. I don't know if that was the message that you wanted to send, but I know that those words were very hurtful to some. You can't say that you're not homophobic and then not recognize the existence of the very people that you serve. Greetings, welcome and acknowledgement of diversity seem to be hollow words when you don't see people. I've listened to many stories from the LGBT community, those of severe pain and hurt, from being isolated, physically wounded, denied promotions at work, to a loss of identity from a loving God that created all of humanity, all in the name of religious and governmental institutions. And through that process of listening and study and prayer, my heart was changed. It's time to stop and listen to people, all people, and not hide behind faith or religious institutions. You know, faith should enliven us. It should help us to be better people so that we can learn to love all. And you cannot love while you judge and condemn. I'm disappointed in not having a proclamation from a mayor who has given 129 since 2012, a proclamation that would say to all that Longview, our community, is one of inclusion, diversity, and a place where bullying and intolerance will not be accepted. But I am thankful for PFLAG and all of those who have shared their time and their resources to bring the Pride Festival to life and I do pray that it will help us to see each other as people, all working together in Longview and all loved and valued by God, just as they are. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Pastor Horn. Pastor Horn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, City Counselor. You guys know I don't come around too much unless I got a little issue. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Gary Smith for doing a superb job over in my area, cleaning out a ditch area. But I'm here on concern about another... Another person, elderly lady by the name of Birdie Horn over on 14th Street, 1105 South 14th Street. The city had made some kind of arrangements to erect a drainage area for her that stopped the water from bagging up in her yard. I think they purchased a garage from her somewhat a few years ago and they supposed had widened that ditch out so the water could continue to flow to keep the mosquitoes and stuff from piling up congregating in and keeping the water out of her yard. And as of this day, it hadn't happened. I made a phone call to the drainage and sewage people and someone went out about six, seven months ago and done some spraying, outlining, as if they was fixing to go ahead and start doing the job. And like I said, it's been like six, seven months and no one have yet still done anything about it. And so, I just thought I'd bring it to the council and see if we could try to figure out what can we do to get that project completed. That address is 1105 South 14th Street over here in Longview, Texas. It was a project that's supposed to have already taken place and it yet to take place and she still have to park her vehicle out in the street because once it rain, all the water bags up in her yard and she have a pool. And we trying to figure out what can we do to get that problem erected. And so, and I appreciate the council for allowing me this opportunity.
Okay. Pastor Horn, thank you for being here tonight. Okay, Mr. G Floyd.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the City Manager, official staff and members of the public. The City of Longview Charter, Article 2, the City Council, Section 2.03, Council Qualification reads, "The mayor and each of the members of the City Council have the following qualifications: Have paid a filing fee..." Section D, subsection D, "Have paid a filing fee of $100 or have submitted a petition for candidacy in lieu of a filing fee and said petition must be signed by not less than greater than 25 of qualified voters of the territory from which the office is elected to equal to one half of 1% of the total received in the said territory by all candidates for mayor in the most recent mayor general election." I'd like to ask that you amend the article and that subsection to be changed to have no nominal monetary fee, filing fee, and require a petition with 20 or 30 of the registered voters from the district in which the candidate resides as a mandatory requirement and not as an optional requirement for placing the candidate's name on the ballot. The monetary filing fee, it's not much, but I think the voters can better decide who should be on the ballot by having them, rather than paying the fee just to get the 25 signatures. Again, I think that's easier to have the fee, but the names and the voters are better. The $100 fee was implemented by the mayor and the council determined if a candidate was legitimate. No one should attempt to determine to say that a candidate's filing or running for an office isn't legitimate, but the citizens of Longview. The council should move quickly to make the change. And I do thank the mayor for his enlightenment of the Texas statutes and the other information, but again, I appreciate you letting me know that the council, if it decides to, can change that and make the nominal monetary fee not a part of the filing. And I would ask that you would do that and let the voters exclusively decide, not just the amount of money that you can pay, because as it is an arbitrary figure, it could be $100 or $200 or $5 or $10,000 maybe, but anyway, I'd just like to see the voters decide that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Okay, that leads us to our presentation items and the first item, Presentation of Proclamation Commemorating the Ninth Annual National Dump the Pump Day. And I have today with us, Demia Pentecost from Longview Transit. Demia?
You say Demia?
Miss, Miss Pitt.
That's the queen.
Okay, so it's the Ninth Annual National Dump the Pump Day. June 19th, 2014 marks the Ninth Annual National Dump the Pump Day as a day that encourages people to ride public transportation, to save money, to revitalize communities, protect the environment, reduce our dependence on foreign oil, and to improve the quality of life for all Americans. People who ride public transportation can save, on average, more than $10,174 per year based on today's gas prices, the cost of owning a car and the average unreserved parking rent. Every $1 invested in public transportation generates approximately $4 in economic returns, powering community growth and revitalization. U.S. public transportation use reduces the country's carbon footprint by 37 million metric tons, which is equivalent to New York City, Washington DC, Atlanta, Denver and Los Angeles combined stopped using electricity. Public transportation use in 498 urban areas in the United States saved 865 million hours annually in travel time and 450 million gallons of fuel. And without public transportation, annual congestion costs would have risen by nearly $21 billion, from 121 to 142 billion. So, therefore, I jadeen by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview to hereby proclaim June 19th, 2014 as National Dump the Pump Day in Longview and encourage transit ridership on June 19th, 2014. Thank you very much. Then we have the National HIV Test Day and I've got Leslie Manning from Wellness Point and Tiffany Mack from Special Health Resources. You notice she didn't jump in and help me on your name, huh? You didn't talk, you didn't straighten her out, did you? Y'all come on over here. Somebody on... All right. All right. National HIV Test Day, June 27th, 2014. June 27th, 2014 is the first year of commemoration and observance of National HIV Testing Day in Longview. Testing is critical to the prevention and can lead to treatment, which can not only reduce mortality and improve the quality of life, but also reduce the spread of HIV from an infected person to their partner by approximately 96%. This initiative sends a message, take the test, take control, to those at risk from HIV and from those living with HIV. More than 1.1 million people in the United States are living with HIV infection and 1 in 6, or 15.8%, are unaware of their infection. National HIV Testing Day is directed, planned and strategically overseen by Strategic Leadership Council made up of prominent organizations, including the Center for Disease Control and Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administrations, to mobilize community-based organizations and stakeholders involved in HIV AIDS prevention, care and treatment. Wellness Point and Special Health Resources for Texas are hosting community events to recognize this day and its importance to national HIV testing for all citizens concerned. So, therefore, I jadeen by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Longview to hereby proclaim June 27th, 2014 as National HIV Test Day in Longview. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Mack. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Here, I have two copies. Okay. So, the next item is, let's see, we have a Presentation of Simplified Sanitation Collection System by Mr. Dwayne Archer. Good afternoon, Mr. Archer.
Good afternoon. How are you, sir?
How you doing? All right.
Congratulations to our new council member, Ms. Williams. Last year, it was about a year ago, we council approved the simplified collection system. And so, now what I do is like to give you an update because we've got some dates now. We want to get that out to the public and we want to spend a little time with that. So, the goals of the simplified collection system were to increase our recycling. We had Rivers Recycling available to us. We wanted to take advantage of that. We wanted to spread our recycling collection to more than one collection day. We were starting to find that that was a difficult thing as more people participated. It was difficult to get it all done in one day. We wanted to continue to collect the same types of items. We didn't want to make a big change there with our customers. We wanted to continue to operate without a bag limit, reduce employee injuries because everything that got picked up at the curb had to be manhandled to the truck, so we wanted to address that. We wanted to reduce our overall operating costs and that eliminated the need for a $1 rate increase, which would have been in October of 13, which in this fiscal year, or fiscal year. And then consider alternative fuels to minimize our emissions footprint and of course, to reduce litter. Those trash set out in bags is vermin getting into that and it just creates a litter problem. So, there were several changes that take place as part of this system. The number one thing is that all of our customers are going to receive a 95 gallon trash cart and a 95 gallon recycling cart. We need to purchase eight CNG compressed natural gas multi-pack units and the multi-pack unit has a collection arm and it also has that rear hopper so we can handle some of the larger items. Move to once a week collection for the garbage. Collect garbage and recycling on the same day, so citizens will have one day and that's when everything goes to the curb. Reduce our driver positions from four and we're going to do that through attrition. And we've already met that goal once and we've had to kind of overstaff again to get us to the program. Right now, we've overstaffed two, so we're down two through attrition right now. And then reduce our required contract laborers down to eight. And we want to do all that with no increase in our sanitation rate. So, let me talk about trucks. Eight CNG MAC LEU chassis with that high multi-pack body I talked about have been purchased. Four of them are already in Longview. We should take possession of those next week and we're going to go ahead and start getting those out so those guys can get familiar with them and operate them. Update on the old trucks. The loans have been paid that we had for those old trucks. Fun balance is still in good shape afterwards. We will auction those units off. Once the new system is in full operation and we're comfortable with it, then we will conduct that auction. CNG fueling, as you know, Independence has a fueling station right now at Eastman Road near I-20, behind the Denny's there, and the mobile drive and premier is under construction and if they can get a break from the rain, they'll be able to get that done, so. Just to show you a little bit about the carts, that's kind of the design that we have for the logo on the side of the carts and a couple of important things on the lids. The black lid will be for garbage only and we will make sure, and we're going to mark that with the word landfill. So, if you put it in the black lidded cart, that is going to the landfill. The blue lidded cart will have the words recyclables only and we want as much as we can get in there, take advantage of that recycling. The carts will begin delivery July the 7th and what we're going to do is we're going to stage out of the MODCOB Convention Center. A private company will handle that and they will start after the 4th of July celebration. That's why we waited till the 7th. They will have all of the carts delivered in Longview by August the 16th, which is a Saturday, and then that next Monday, we will start, which is the 18th, will start the once a week collection. And then we just ask all of the customers to refrain from using those carts until the 18th, so that our crews can get kind of used to that truck and be able to handle it. The collection days, if you're on Monday, Thursday, we were able to, either you're going to, your day will be either on Monday or a Thursday. The Tuesday, Friday customers were a little bit different, so if you were in South Longview on Tuesday, Friday, you'll have Tuesday and then Spring Hill and then west of 31 will be on Wednesday. So, they'll actually have a change in their day. Information will accompany the carts when they're delivered, both in English and in Spanish, and that's kind of a mock-up that we have here of what that'll look like. It's got lots of information about it and it shows the map. And then in addition, we're going to do some advertising to get that word out through billboards. We're going to print something actually on the water bill envelope and also in the water bill itself. Customers can visit longviewtexas.gov/simplified for more information. We're going to run some newspaper ads. We're going to put together a video that'll show on Channel 5, kind of telling people, okay, you've got your carts, now what? You know, how to operate with those. And then on June 26th at 5:30 here in the council chambers, we'll have a public meeting where citizens are welcome to come out, ask their questions, meet the team. They can meet people from sanitation, ask those questions of how things operate and so that'll be available. And then if, just for more information, then call sanitation 237-1250. Visit that website I mentioned earlier or just give us an email at recycle@longviewtexas.gov. And I think with that, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
First of all, you know, I love it. I love the entire project. I think it's going to be a tremendous benefit to our community. One question, I noticed on the very first slide, you had listed reduction in litter.
Yes.
And that is something that I think the entire council were very passionate about. So, could you elaborate a little bit on how we're actually going to push for that reduction of litter? Because that's something that we talk about a lot specifically with, within the mayor's I-20 task force and it probably has come up so forth at the CPAC meetings and such. So, I'd like to know kind of what are your plans for that too, because we really need a big push in that area.
Well, I think that when we took a look at where litter was coming from, a big part of it was coming from a person sets the bag at the curb and then here comes the dog or the crows and then that stuff gets spread out and then the wind spreads it around. So, with it being in that container, it'll be protected. I mean, there may be some vermin that can do something, maybe a raccoon, but most will not be able to get to that trash and reduce the amount of litter. So, I think our neighborhoods, and of course, those carts laying out will be very, you know, be attractive. It'll be better than just bags and of course, the vermin getting in them. So, that's where we talk about reducing litter. Protecting that trash at the curb is what we were after.
And also, well, just to kind of, you know, I understand the safety aspect too of our guys jumping off of the trucks as we historically have done. So, in thinking about that, is there going to be a little flexibility for that citizen who may just deliberately throw out a bag or throw out some, you know, are they going to, are our guys going to be flexible enough to be able to grab some of that stuff? Because I know they do a great job now. I mean, I see it every day in my district. There still remains a great deal of work, but will there be more of that taking place as well throughout the entire community?
Yeah, the whole system was designed about, around that customer that wasn't going to... See, we could have just bought side loaders that just grabbed carts, but we didn't want to do that. We wanted to make sure that we could handle that customer that just has the one bag, does not want to use the cart, wants to set it out like they always have. And so, we'll have somebody on the back of that truck that'll be able to get out and handle that one bag and get that taken care of, and that's why we have that rear load hopper there, so. So, it shouldn't be any real difference to the customer, other than they're going to have a great place to storage, store their trash and their recyclables and, you know, move into the ones a week.
Great. And if this really is as successful as we're anticipating it's going to be, because I think it will be, I'd like for you guys to begin thinking long-term as far as what can we do for some of those highly wooded areas, because it's going to take more than a cleanup group to go in there and clean that up. So, I don't know if there are any alternatives out there as far as sanitation to kind of clean up some of those areas too, but maybe, you know, in the near future, we can move toward that direction as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
I got a question, Mr. Mayor. The biggest question I get, Mr. Mayor, is if that $1 fee going to be dropped on the utility water bill? Is that $1 fee going to be dropped from the utility billing statement?
Actually, it's already been dropped. We dropped it in October.
And you have to carry both carts out, the sanitation and recyclable, on the same day? For example, if my pickup was on a Tuesday, I have to get the sanitation and the recyclable bin at the curb on the same day?
Yes, sir. They'll both be placed on the same day. The fees have all been removed and so it's going to be, and we're not going up on our fees, so it's going to be the $14.95 plus our fuel fee, like it has been in the past. And then, yeah, you'll set out your garbage and your recycling and we hope the recycling is more full than the trash.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. See, you could have gave $51 like we said to that booth instead of $50. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dwayne. Okay, council, before we move over to consent, no, hang on, one more thing. We've got the, before we do the consent agenda, I'm going to move one action item up, but we're going to go ahead and do the D item now, the proposed hotel conference center planning, Mr. Bonds.
Thank you. Just want to give council an update where we are in our planning of the next step of our hotel conference center. Council's probably aware that an RFP was issued in December 2012 where we considered two proposals. We selected Longview Innkeeper 1 to begin negotiations with and actually ended negotiations or called those off in January 2014. So, we thought that the next thing we should do would be to utilize a conference center specific consulting service, pretty fancy name for a consultant that'll help us to determine several things, like what's the supply and demand for this facility? What site should we use? What some factors like, what's the configuration of the facility? What size should it be? What's the management relationship between the public-private entities here? Ask them to prepare some financial models for the investment and operating costs to consider the impact of MODCOB complex, whether this thing is going to be competition or a partner or an asset to MODCOB. And we would limit the site evaluations to the I-20 corridor, so this being Estes Parkway and I-20, the original proposed center was kind of in this area at the end of 149. So, we're going to ask the consultant to just kind of use this area to look for potential sites for the conference center. So, in summary, the work would be to inspect the local sites, to assemble some related economic and market data. We'd like for them to interview some representatives of area commerce, industry and hospitality sector and obviously to do this analysis of our potential revenue expenses and return of investments. We have... We have, have a preliminary talks and contract ready with a consultant and the cost is about $20,000. And he said it'd take them about two months to do it, so.
Questions? Counsel, I think this is what we discussed, that we needed to really incorporate a professional service to really help put this together. I think staff did a good job on the first, the first attempt at trying to get this together, but there were still quite a few holes. So we'll need to bring this back as an action item?
No, sir. We won't do, do that. We'll just bring the results of the study when he's through with it.
So, so we don't have to take action on this one? Okay. But just so you'll know exactly what, what direction things are moving, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel. Yeah, if I could, I want to move the action item up regarding, action item A. We have a number of people here from our Leadco board that have other engagements. So if I could, we're going to move to action item A, consider resolution authorizing a tax abatement agreement with Tractor Supply Company of Texas LP for improvements in job creation at facilities located at 2707 Leadco Drive. Keith Bonds.
Okay, you've read most of it. So this is a tax abatement for the Tractor Supply Corporation. Well, they'll be developing a regional mixing center. It's going to be used to receive and distribute high-volume goods and for their retail stores in the three-state area here. They have agreed to purchase the spec building at 2707 Leadco Drive, $1.1 million purchase price. They will spend $3 million on improvements at that facility to finish out the building and additional $2 million in equipment and machinery. And estimate about $22 million in annual inventory there each year. And hopefully have, eventually employ 15 to 25 people. But for right now, their obligations are to make a minimum $5 million capital improvement investment and hire 10 full-time employees the first year. And our obligation is to abate 50% of the ad valorem property taxes on all increase of property values for the first five years. So I'd like to recognize, like you said, President Leadco Board, Lester Lucy's here tonight.
We have Lester here for questions, okay? Well, Lester, did you have any comments that you'd like to make?
No, sir. We, we feel it's a, well, we feel it's a good thing for the city. We're obviously making a recommendation to council. That spec building's been around for a few years. It did what it was supposed to do. It brought a lot of people into town to look at the facility. This is the first one decided they wanted to buy it. And they're going to add, you know, quite a bit to it. And for us, we feel like it's, we're moving something that is not on the tax rolls essentially today and making it taxable day one. And we're abating, asking you to abate 50% of that, but it's going to be a net increase for the city for sure. And Tractor Supply is a growing company. They just recently moved into the Fortune 500, so that says something good about our city also.
Good. Thank you, Lester, for the effort of the entire Leadco committee or board. Thank you all very much. Any other questions, comments? Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I sat in on several of the Leadco meetings as this whole thing was being discussed. And as often is the case when something like this and you bring this, this kind of proposal to the council, there's a lot of work that's been done to get it here. And I'd like to congratulate Mr. Lucy, all the members of the board, Susan Mazarakis Gill, the executive director. I know they put a lot of effort into this, there was a lot of back and forth with these folks. They could have gone a lot of other places and they chose Longview, Texas. And we're excited about what this might lead to eventually. And we hope they'll be great corporate citizens. So congratulations to Leadco.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your hard work. Okay, counsel, I need a, a motion.
Do you have to open a public hearing first?
A motion on that action item?
No public hearing.
Do you have to, do you have to?
No, this is not, this is not a public hearing.
Okay, my apologies.
Have a motion.
Oh, I'll motion.
In a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you all very much. Thank you guys for being here. Okay, consent agenda, council, is any items on the consent agenda that we'd like to move for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Now you jump up. Okay, zoning items, now we're at public hearing. Okay, item A to consider, application Z-14-05.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council, Mr. Willard. First application, application Z-14-05 is a, to consider a rezone from multifamily to general retail for lots 5 through 7 located at 1501 Pine Tree Road. This is adjacent to an existing convenience store. This is to allow for an expansion of that convenience store. As you can see by the zoning map, it's just an extension of that zoning district. It is consistent with the future land use map for light intensity business. Yeah, let's not go into the next map. There we go. This is an aerial shot. It's, this shows it as a wooded tract. Go to some of the pictures. And this kind of shows the area behind the store from across the street. And there are some duplexes adjacent to the property. Planning and zoning commission and staff do recommend approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Looking back at them.
If not, this item requires a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I do not have any speaker cards or anyone here that'd like to speak to this matter. If they're not being so, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, may I have a motion? Have a motion. In a second, all in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item B to consider, public hearing to consider, application Z-14-06, Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. The applicant is requesting a rezone from general retail to light commercial. This is located at the corner of Gilmer Road and George Ritchie. Currently, this corridor is zoned general retail. It is consistent with the future land use map that designates it for high-intensity business. The property currently has two residential structures on it. They are requesting the rezone to build a convenience store. The convenience store doesn't require the rezone, but they are asking in the next item for a specific use permit for a car wash. And so the car wash is, is why they're asking to do the light commercial with an SUP. And we recommended that they do that for, for protection rather than just going to heavy commercial and opening that door wide open. And that's usually where we run into issues with adjacent property owners. If we didn't need it, we felt we shouldn't go for it. But I would be happy to answer any questions. Do recommend approval as, as well as planning and zoning commission.
Okay, questions, Mr. Shirley, on this item? If not, this item requires a public hearing. I have one speaker card, but I, I have Fred Hakim. But Fred, are you here to answer questions on that particular item? Or did you have something to say about that item?
Well, I have something to say on that item too.
B, well, please come forward. Yeah, it's public hearing.
Hi, my name is Fred Hakim, we're F&amp;H builder. And we're trying to put a convenience store and a car wash on that property. The way I understood, it's zoned for retail. The Jason property towards its own retail too. And the owner of the Jason property wants me to put a fence, six-foot fence across the line on outside of the property. I don't see a reason because it both zone same retail. If it was residential and the retail, I wouldn't mind putting a fence up, but it's not.
Fred, let me ask a question, Mr. Shirley. Is that not on the next item as far as a specific use permit?
Yes, that was a condition that P and Z put on the SUP.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to actually, when we go to that next item, Fred is when we'll talk.
I'm one step ahead then.
That's okay. You're always one step ahead.
All right.
No, you can stay there if you want.
Okay.
All right.
I have nothing to say, but if you all have any question, I'll be glad to answer.
Questions of Mr. Hakim on item B? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to that particular item? They're not being so, public hearing is closed. May I have a motion? Have a motion? Second in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Now, item C is application S-14-02.
Thank you, Mayor Dean. This is a request for a specific use permit to allow for auto laundry or a car wash within areas that are near residential areas or areas that are sensitive. We do specific use permits to allow us to look at the situation, make recommendations for specific protections if warranted. In this, let me see if I can get there quick. In this situation, as we just passed the rezone, they are asking for the SUP. Planning and zoning commission, as was mentioned, did make a recommendation for approval. However, they did condition it with a six-foot, six-foot wood or masonry fence to be placed along the southern portion of the lot adjacent. Let me get to the aerial. And that would be along this boundary line, the southern boundary line. The adjacent property there, I believe, is currently undeveloped. It is zoned general retail. The other adjacent properties that are residential will require a fence automatically as just part of our zoning requirements.
So, I mean, Mr. Hakim's comment about, you know, having to put a fence up, why would you have to put a fence up between retail to retail zoning? And why would they make that recommendation?
Yes, generally, the zoning ordinance does require screening and buffering adjacent to lesser intense uses, not necessarily zoning. So there are situations where you maybe have a residence in a general retail zone. And we would require that there be fencing to protect that residential use there. But in the situation where you have zoning to zoning with no lesser intense use, the zoning ordinance and staff really does not promote that. Because there's really not a need to screen and buffer from nothing. But that was a condition that was asked for by the adjacent property owner and, and planning and zoning commission did make that a condition.
Okay. Questions of Mr. Shirley?
I think you just answered my question. So that's Deana Miller's place, right, next door?
Well, hers is the.
Well, it's not, not along that portion. It would be just along, from this, this corner.
Yeah.
Along this boundary line.
Came and requested the fence or someone else?
I believe it was, it was someone else. It was Mr. Grubbs.
Speaker card from that place.
The rear property, okay.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Shirley? Okay, this item requires a public hearing. I have a speaker card from Larry Grubbs.
I'm Larry Grubbs at 3803 Hobson. And I request the fence because if you put a car wash up, it's going to cause trash and people coming over on the property. And that's why I request the fence. Coming over the Jason property.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, any questions to Mr. Grubbs?
No, I have one from Mr. Hakim.
Okay, just a second. Okay, Fred. I'm sorry, we have a speaker card from Mr. Fred Hakim.
What kind of car wash is it going to be? Is it the drive-through? It's going to be have the places where people can get out and spray it themselves?
No, it's going to be the exactly same one on the McCann Road next to the bank and.
Soopies or whatever they are.
Yeah, food service, semi-food service because there's a people to watch their place. And the way I understood, it's not called food service because somebody working there. But it's, it's automatic, all fully automatically go. And as far as the trash, anybody go, the car goes through and washes, come back by the vacuum and they throw the trash in the trash can, which is between each vacuum and vacuum the car. Therefore, there won't be no trash. If you go to any of those $5 car wash, you can see there is no trash anywhere. Next to the bank on McCann Road and Hawkins Parkway.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions to Mr. Hakim? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Hakim.
Thanks.
Is anyone else here would like to speak to that matter? If not, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Shirley. So, and from what you're saying as staff, that typically you would not require that type of fence between two similar zoning areas?
Yes, sir. It was not a staff recommendation. It was a recommendation from planning commission. And as, as Mr. Hakim stated, with the semi-automated car washes where you do have attendance there, you generally don't have the same trash issues like you do the, the old, old style that are unmanned with the multiple bay washes.
Okay. So, council, what I'm hearing is that the request is to approve this motion, but to amend it, removing the requirement to install a six-foot fence or masonry fence. Is that correct? Is that? No, we'll have to, we'll have to amend. Is that correct, Robert?
I think the council has the option to do either. They can either approve it as submitted or they could make a motion to approve it with that amendment that you have suggested, whichever council so desires.
That's what I'm trying to communicate here. So do I have a motion?
I'd move to accept it as it is.
With the fence or without?
With the fence.
Okay. We have a motion to accept it with the fence. Is there any other motion?
Second.
Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes. Okay. The next item is item B, consider resolution, yes, city manager or city managers, to negotiate and execute a treated water supply. Oh, excuse me. Item B is being tabled at this time. We'll go to item C, consider resolution appointing the mayor pro temp. Okay, so it's time, council, to appoint a replacement. Mr. Gary has been working diligently for the last year. And done a wonderful job. And as is the normal, the, the normal protocol, I guess, we go from seat to seat with the most senior member that is not served, having the opportunity to serve. We, from Gary's seat moving down the line, we do not have such a person. And the discussion has been that Mr. Allen is the most senior member. He has served, but would be the next person in line. And there's discussion that it possibly could be Mr. Sims because he and Mr. Allen both served one-year difference. So I'm going to recommend Mr. Allen, again, just because it's the next seat in line. And so, yes.
I'm seeing your, Mr. Allen.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion, a recommendation, Mr. Allen. And if somebody wants to have a different motion, fine, but I'm going to recommend Mr. Allen and would, would like a, a vote there.
Second that.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, the motion passes. Mr. Allen is the mayor pro temp. Okay, items of community interest. Mr. Sims.
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Gary?
Okay, first of all, I think I got two items there, Mr. Mayor. The first item, I want to thank the Girl Scout troop, 2851, for saying the prayer and pledge this evening. And thank the troop leader, Mr. Janis, for bringing them in to say that for us. Number two, I want to give recognition to the Longview Fire Department for receiving or achieving the PPC, Public Protection Classification. Recognition, number two in the state. There are only 10 cities in the state that's in that class two classification. And I just, I talked to Chief Stillman, Chief Stillman here? No, Chief Stillman's not here, but I talked to Chief Stillman and he said that they're going to get to the number one class maybe in the next two or three years. Because it's only six cities in the state of Texas in that class one. And that's Houston, Galveston and Mesquite. But he said that in the next 36 months, he's going to try to get to class one. And actually, Mr. Mayor, what, what it entails is basically keeping the insurance rates lower for homeowners and commercial businesses in Longview. The higher, it's for fire protection in this area. And I thought that was great that the fire department accomplished that task. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for bringing attention here.
First of all, I want to give a shout out to Officer Deborah Stiles and Chief Dingler. I've really been calling on you guys a lot lately. Thank you for helping to reduce crime. Also, thank you, Ms. Hill, for some things you've been doing in District 3 as well. Juneteenth is coming up. Great time in the community, a few of the events that'll be taking place. The Miss Juneteenth pageant will be this Sunday at the Longview Community Center beginning at 3:00 PM. And of course, on next Saturday, June the 21st, the softball tournament will begin, I believe, at 8:00 AM at Broughton. And the parade, I think, is going to begin at 10:00 AM, if I'm correct. You riding the fire truck?
It's going to be too hot. Would they turn that air conditioner on?
Uh, yeah. But I want to encourage everyone to come out and celebrate with us in Broughton Park on that day. And the rodeo is the following weekend, which is going to be June the 28th, a Saturday, at 8:00 PM at the rodeo arena. Lots of fun. Also, Saturday, June the 21st, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, the LGBT Pride Festival will be held at Heritage Plaza downtown Longview. And it is sponsored by PFLAG. And if you do not know what PFLAG stands for, it is parents and friends and family of lesbians and. and friends and family of lesbians and gays. And this celebration will begin at 5:00 PM and will last till 9:00 PM. I encourage members of the community to come out and support this event. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kristen?
Do I have anything?
Okay.
I have one thing. I'd like to recognize one of the members of our fine city, Chuck King. He was recognized by the Boys and Girls Club this week as their champion of the year. I won't embarrass him by repeating some of the funny stories that were told about him, but he did move here in the 80s. I guess his first store was in the mall with Chick-fil-A. He did well enough. He opened up the one over on Fourth Street. And I guess that one was so successful that Chick-fil-A broke the tradition and allowed him to actually open a second store in the same town, which of course is over on Gilmer Road and the Loop. I got to believe there's thousands of kids who've benefited from fundraisers and car washes and other things like that where Chuck King and Chick-fil-A has donated food and many of the other fundraisers around town. He's a card-carrying member of the Marbally Baptist Church, and obviously he puts a lot of time in over there because the preacher introduced him. And so congratulations to Chuck King. He's a fine citizen and a great asset for our city.
Thank you, Richard. And I want to see that cow. The city's got one of those cows.
He's got his own cow.
Man.
The kids love. One more thing I didn't, I forgot to mention. I just want to put a plug in for Boys and Girls Club. 285 kids during the school year and over 300 kids during the summer are at that place every single day. And it's right next to Paula Martin-Jones. They moved in an annex into what used to be the church there right behind it. And just a growing program and a great program. So salute to Boys and Girls Club.
Good deal. Okay, Longview Public Library Summer Reading Club starts on Friday, June the 13th at 10:00 AM. Kids from ages 12 and under. Stop by the library's children desk in order to get your kids registered. For more information, call 903-237-1345. The National Dump the Pump Day will be Thursday, June 19th. Citizens are encouraged to ride public transportation, save money on this day. More information, contact Longview Transit, 903-753-2287. On June 20th, beginning at 1:30 PM, the City of Longview Partners in Prevention Mentoring Advisory Council and Friends of Partners in Prevention are sponsoring the Fourth Annual Drive to Inspire Golf Challenge, benefiting the Partners in Prevention mentoring program. To register for this event or to become a sponsor, please call Partners in Prevention at 903-237-1019. Mark your calendars for the Fourth of July and the Freedom Celebration at MODCOB, which we read about today in the paper. The festival starts at 10:00 AM with fireworks at dark. Neil McCoy will headline the indoor concert and will also feature Holly Tucker from NBC's TV's The Voice. Advanced tickets for the concert are available at Longview Cavenders and Outback, or OuthouseTickets.com. What are the costs of those tickets? Okay, so $15 for the ticket. And that gets them into the gate and all of the... Come tell us what that, what that is.
That's just for the concert.
Okay.
Entry into the complex is free.
Gotcha. Okay, so $15 in advance. What about the day of the same?
Twenty.
Twenty.
And children are less than that, but that's for an adult.
What are the children?
Children, I believe, are, who has their little flyer?
None of us. That's why we're asking you. I don't have one.
I'm sorry. I don't have that all memorized.
Okay. Anyway, $15 in advance for the adults. Okay. For more information, which probably be the best thing, call 903-237-1230. Okay. Partners in Prevention, the Longview Fire Department will host the Heroes of Tomorrow or Hot Camp. It is going to be hot on Saturday, July the 12th and Saturday, July 26th, from 8:15 to 3 o'clock at the 411 American Legion Boulevard. This is a one-day camp for 7th through 12th grade boys and girls. Parents are encouraged to come in and informational lunch session with Chief Stillman from 12 to 1. For more information, call Partners in Prevention at 903-237-1019. And there are no more community interest items meeting. Oh! Well, that's a terrible picture. You can't see that. Hey, man, that's, that's the great Isaiah Thomas. I was in, I was in San Antonio last week before the beginning of the NBA Finals and introduced myself to him. And what a nice guy. I mean, we're back in a different area of the restaurant, and he came back and visited with us some more and took pictures, but a real outstanding man and a great, great NFL, excuse me, NBA Hall of Fame. He could be on the NFL, too. This guy could have done anything athletically. He is a great person. Sheesh. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.